All right, cool. It is 7:01 on Tuesday, the 25th of June, 2024, and calling the Board of Selectmen for the Georgetown Board of Select meeting to order. First thing, are there any public comments?
Yes. Unless there's somebody on the line. So Lisa Reese, 320 Robin Hood Road.
Would you come around, Lisa, to where... That's it.
Hi.
There you go, you were on TV.
Yes, okay. So approximately a year ago, a light was replaced that had been previously out for over two years on... I don't even want to say intersection because it's not an intersection, on the Robin Hood Road by the Noble Road. This light that they replaced is supposed to be the newest, greatest LED thing. It's very bright. It doesn't light where it's supposed to light. It actually lights up Dwayne McLeod's yard and house, lights up our driveway, doesn't even, you know, doesn't light up Noble Road, which I assumed was, that's what it's supposed to be. And it's just, it's, we feel, and I have a number of signatures here from people on the Noble Road and Robin Hood Road, that this light is intrusive and unnecessary. We have issues with, or concerns, I should say, with the brown-tailed moth, and the research does show that they are attracted to light. The brown-tailed moth are back. We spent a lot of money on our property and a lot of effort to keep those away, and it just seems to have a light like that is sort of counterintuitive to what we were trying to do. So anyway, I just, I do have a number of... I did write a letter to Tyler just recently to revisit this issue. In regards to our property, a few things have changed over the year. One is we've lost quite a few of our trees because of all the storms last year. So now we have the light coming in even more, and the brown tails are back. So we feel like that's a public health issue as well. So like I said, I have, I have this here, a number of people, so it's just not me, you know, concerned about it. It's certainly not a citizens initiative, but it tells you anyway that, that there are a lot of people concerned about, you know, a housing role being, the light pollution, and that we just feel that it's pretty intrusive light at this point. So, and I do have, I don't know, there's a number of things that you mained, did a, you know, this is, this is the headline, "Brown-tailed moth, love your lights, turn them off." So I would like to know, maybe at this point, and I may not be able to know at this point, if that is something that, because a year ago, I did not, as a whole, hear back from the Selectmen, or the Select Board, sorry. So I would like to know that we are going to look into this in that we can eventually just have it eliminated.
Okay, we can look at, Tyler knows about it now, we're now aware of it once again.
And truthfully, when we got the item of correspondence from you, Lisa, regarding this, I had intended to ask the Board to at least let me look into what some other options are, because I do believe there was a sharp corner near there where there will need to be some kind of lighting, but there has to be a creative solution out there that I hope I can get to look into with the permission of the Board, which I was going to seek in a little bit, so.
Right.
Great minds think alike.
Yeah. You know, the issue is, the light had not been on for, you know, over two, two years, so there was no, you know...
Well, CMP was tardy in fixing stuff.
There is no issue there.
There was like five or six lights in town that we had, we'd wanted them to fix, and they just hadn't gotten to it, so.
But I think this time around, especially with a light like that, I think we really got to think about eliminating them. You know, really, do we need, do we need one there? I mean, we have the Marina, so we're getting it for both sides. I mean, there's plenty of lights there at the Marina. You know, like I said, and I am worried about the, you know, the brown-tailed moth situation. The Marina, I would have to say with some exceptions, do a pretty good job of keeping, you know, their, their light pollution down. But with that new light, it's just, it's, it's just awful. It's just not, not, not a good, good situation. And like I said, we would like to have that knocked out anymore. That's mine.
We'll see.
Do you need this?
We're more than happy to take a copy.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Lisa.
Yep, all right. I printed these all out, so, but you guys, in my letter, it has, it has the links.
I'll take a copy.
Yep. Yeah. There's that coffee. And then there's this one, it's like promoting quality outdoor lighting in your community, and it talks about those new LED lights and how a lot of different communities have had issues with them, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Listening to me for your time.
All right, is there any other public comment? Don't see any. Is there anything to be added to the agenda?
Nothing from us. No, I'm good with it.
Nothing from me.
Nothing from me.
So I think it's yours.
Can I just ask one more thing before I leave? What's the next step here?
So the next step, when we get to the item of correspondence, I'll seek approval from the Board to look into the things down there and engage CMP and look into that, so.
And this time, we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Ron, you just said that, this time over that.
Okay, thank you. All set?
Thank you, I'll take care.
Thank you.
So the next item, technically, we should have started at seven. We had a public hearing on the interim fee schedule. All of our adopted ordinances had referenced that before we adopted a fee schedule, there'd be a hearing. We're not making any changes tonight, save codifying statute on FOA law and adding in 50 cents a page on photocopy and notary. So we'd open public hearing if anyone wanted to come in. If not, we can cross that off of our scheduled appointments.
Open the...
Open the hearing.
Open the hearing to public comment? I don't see any.
We can close the hearing.
So I guess we can, do I have to move that, or just?
We'll just close it, and we'll get to that, I mean, new business later.
Okay. So closing that meeting.
Perfect. And the next item we had was a scheduled appointment that we have Ruth Endrick, who is on at 7:10, so we'll hop right in with Ruth, and she's going to give us a brief update on the Kennebec Etrolyland Trust Flying Point project and why we have a document that needs town signature. Thank you for coming, Ruth.
Yeah, thanks for putting me in on the agenda. So I guess it's maybe a year and a half, two years ago now, we had received a grant award from the Maine Natural Resources Conservation Program that will fund replacement of the culvert with probably a box culvert structure on Flying Point Road, and it'll also fund improvements to the wetland at that site. So we have that funding. In order to use it, we need, so this funding source is mitigation money, and so it's if people have impacted wetlands, they play into a pool and state awards that money out through these grant funds. So as a result, they have some requirements that come with awarding that funding. And so much of this is going to occur on the marsh surface, and you don't need to worry about it. But all of the property owners of components of the project that do need to sign the project agreement. And so the other aspects of the project, some of it is on Kelts Zorak property. Some of it is on the Nature Conservancy's property, and some of it is on Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, so they are also project landowners for this project. And then for the town, it's Flying Point Road. And so this agreement, the key part that applies to the town is on the second page, the management and use of project area. And basically, it's an agreement to, I guess, as it relates to the town, the agreement states the town further agrees that any future replacements or upgrades to the culvert on Flying Point Road shall meet or exceed the design standards described in the restoration work plan. So our goal, working with Charlie, is to make sure, and I think Charlie has contracted with Pine Tree Engineering to do the designs, so we want, we've had a hydraulic and hydraulic model done for the site to figure out how big it would need to be for current water levels or potential future water levels. So the goal is to put in a structure there that has like a 75-plus-year lifespan. And, yeah, so I guess I'm, what I'm seeking tonight is the Board to support signing this agreement, so signature page is on page four, and allowing us to receive the funds to go forward with the project. I think, I guess, one other thing to note about this signature is that before, I guess, what I'd ask for tonight is approval for it to be signed either by Tyler or by the Chair of the Select Board. It needs to receive one more quick review by the, the Nature Conservancy, who administers the grant, the four signatures, and so we just want to send it back one more time. The other thing that could happen tonight is if you have any recommendations or edits after reviewing this document, we can take those to TNC, incorporate those in, have them run it by their lawyers, and then come back with another version that meets your needs to have that be signed. So I guess, two things tonight. One, are there any changes that you think are important for this project agreement for the town to be comfortable signing it? Two, is, if there are not, if we could have permission for it to be signed?
I don't see, didn't see any issues with it, so.
I saw no issues.
Well, I think that if there were issues, they would be coming from the road commissioner, who's been involved in the project from the beginning. And so I would move that we support the Kelts application with whatever signatures are necessary.
And second?
All right. Any discussion, we've had that all in favor?
Three, oh, perfect. Thank you so, thank you so much, Ruth, we'll be in touch.
Thanks for coming and doing this, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I'm excited for this to get underway. Hopefully, we'll, we just need to finish, get designs, and then hopefully we'll work through permitting within the next six months or so. All right, have a great night.
Thank you.
All right, and the next scheduled appointment comes at 7:20, though we might run on Select Board legislative time to finish the other business. The next item up would be the minutes of June 18th for review and approval.
I move to approve the June 18 minutes.
Second?
All in favor?
Oh, perfect. There were no items of review included in your packet. We have concluded receiving personal property declarations, so this is the last time. This will be coming up under assessing items unless someone is very late in your packet. We had correspondence, there was an email from Philip Davis at Saginaw County EMA regarding some upcoming trainings. I would really encourage all Select Board members at some point, over the course of the next year, to take one of the NIMS classes. It really is a good one, understanding the roles, responsibilities of emergency management. And for John, it is a requirement to take it, so it was Chair of the Select Board. And...
Tyler, can I ask a quick question? Do you know, if Philip can give us a list of where the trainings are going to be and when, that would be helpful, even six months out.
Perfect. I know that they come kind of sporadically as different agencies find a need and they pop up, but I'll see if there are any out.
Okay.
There had been a new elected officials class, for instance, that MMA was putting on, that I was really hoping to get you registered for, and they were only holding it in person in Presquio for a half a day. So they will bring one south in September-ish, but they kind of pop up as they, as they go.
I meant this NIMS training, though.
Okay.
If Phil, if Phil can get us one for the NIMS training, this one's in North Yarmouth, you know, so just if there's any, a little closer, that would be great for the work week timeframe.
I think some of those, if I recall, at one point, we did some of those online.
Right.
The NIMS training, okay.
Yep.
Sorry, I don't mind doing it in person, but it would be great not to drive, you know, to North Yarmouth for two hours and get back, get an hour later, yeah. Okay, super, thank you.
Perfect. And there was also an email from Ruth Endrick that we just addressed, and that was the updated proposal. And there was also the message from Lisa Reese regarding the Robin Hood Road streetlight. And I would seek approval from the Board if you're amenable to at least explore what options might be open down there while keeping mind to public safety.
Yes, Bronwyn.
Well, it seems to me that this is a concern of a number of residents that we've heard and not responded to before. It seems to me that we should perhaps survey all the residents in that area and also consult the road commissioner, because sometimes these lights are put in for reasons of plowing. That was, that's certainly been a consideration other times. But if there is no compelling reason, from the road commissioner's point of view or the sheriff's department point of view, and the residents don't want the light, I'm certainly in favor of eliminating it. It reduces the town's bill, electric bill, and from my personal perspective, one of the reasons I like living in a rural community is that there is no light at night. So every light that we can eliminate is a positive situation. So if that's, that's, that's a little long-winded, and it wasn't really a motion. But I would, if you need a motion, I would certainly move that to have you investigate further whether there is any compelling reason for that particular light to exist or if it should be relocated. And if not, to consult all property owners within reasonable distance and to be sure that they're on board with getting rid of it.
One way...
Versus, versus replacing it.
I, I agree with Bronwyn, I think it should be an agenda item. But one way to, to easily do the survey perhaps is with Survey Monkey. If we can get those email addresses for the neighboring properties, then it's not a huge lift for you.
Right.
We get some, you know, we could start with the list that Lisa gave us and take it from there.
This, this is a lot of them right here.
Yeah, so perfect. Just, you know, that may be enough, and, you know...
Perfect.
I think we'll get our answers that way.
I think so, too.
And then John can fill in the rest on the road commissioner side.
So is that a second on that motion?
It's a second.
Okay. All in favor?
All right. Perfect, and I really like the idea of Survey Monkey.
I mean, it's easy.
And there were no other items of correspondence, we had no continuing items, and I would turn this over to Board members for committee and Board member updates.
I have none.
On both counts?
Yep.
Perfect.
The only thing I had...
John had two meetings last week after a Select Board meeting.
I was going to find the right.
Including one on a holiday.
Yep. The only one that I had was, or the only two, TOPMB. They were just, they're just making sure or asking about how we're going to go about the approving our fee schedule, which is pretty much what we've done. And then there was nothing pressing on the planning board, but the one question that Terry Taylor had probably was how, when it comes to finding budgeting time, how the budget was going to work, where they aren't budgeting to pay for, or using, they don't get the fees for what there's, used to be paying for, for those things, just a matter of, just he wanted to know how to format stuff when you get, when we get to that point. So that was the question for me to bring up with you, I guess. So, and that was, that was it for me.
Thank you, John.
None of my committees have met, although REC is meeting on July 2nd, and so I'll send an email to those folks. We talked offline for a moment, I had asked a question about how meetings go forward if there's vacancy in the chair position, and it was explained to me, for those of you in the public, that for anybody who was serving as chair, they'll continue until the new chair is elected. So either Tyler or I will call a meeting of the Board of Appeals, I'll call a meeting of the, or I'll chair the REC committee until the election occurs on July 2nd. I think that's it for my committee updates.
Thank you very much, yeah. Any questions for anyone along those updates? I would just note, under the membership item, that we have received a flurry of folks that are interested in a series of committees, I think five for Board of Appeals, one for REC, and I know Bronwyn will be working to get in touch with those folks as applications are coming in. But I think five for the Board of Appeals expressing interest is just something to celebrate, because, hey. And with that...
How, do we have alternates on the planning board?
We do.
Isn't Pam Gannell?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, there's a...
But Bill Webster has, Bill Webster's application for the appeals board says that he's an alternate on the planning board.
He is. He is.
He is. So we have two alternates on the planning board, Pam and Bill. Is that, is that the status?
Yes.
That's all those, yeah.
And I think Bill made the point that he is yet to be called into action as an alternate.
Right. I don't think he'll see much more action on the appeals board. So I don't know what to tell him if he wants action.
REC committee.
Right, exactly.
I'm like, I think I'll send him to, I think Solid Waste really needs some backup, you know.
There you go.
They do great, but they, it's been the same front line for many years, and there's no alternate.
Well, it's, it's great that we, yeah, and it's great that we had five people. I know when I joined the Board of Appeals, I think I was, it was only, there was one vacancy, and, and I was asked, do you have, you know, do you have time to do it? So it's great that you're being flooded with applications.
Absolutely. The next item we had was a town administrator update. I'll be very brief, just noting the time, but I wanted to let everyone know the ordinances have been collated from town meeting to smooth, clean copies, and they are now on the town website. I also wanted to let folks know that we had a meeting with FEMA and a series of stakeholders. Mike McDermott as EMA really helped coordinate that, and we are in our countdown now on getting in all of the damages reported to FEMA. They are looking into whether or not our ARPA purchase of the float might actually be able to be reimbursed fed to fed, and MIMA is going to look into that. So cautiously optimistic, not planning on it, but there were good things that could be coming from that. I also wanted to note that I had a call with CMP today about the streetlight at the terminus of Bay Point Road. I can tell you that CMP and talking to them, it would be a very easy shut off. It could take up to three weeks once we decided to get in the queue. I do think if the Board desires that something, we could get going, and they would fast track. If we also wanted to wait, you know, that does take up time of the summer. So, but it is something down there. I went down to Bay Point Road today to make sure I laid eyes and had the right poll number, and I actually got to see a porcupine when we were down there, too. So it was a fun day at Bay Point. I also wanted to note that I will be out of the office next Tuesday and Wednesday on vacation. My sister is graduating from Army boot camp, and I am headed to South Carolina. Pray that I survive the car ride with my father. And lastly...
And the heat.
Yes. And on the theme of vacation, I just want to note that Alex asked that I report that she will be out of the office from the 3rd of July to the 15th. She will reopen on the 15th, so she will be out on vacation seeing family, but we have made arrangements to make sure that folks can either register things online. We've got good links on the website, and I think that there were some creative solutions to make sure she can go see family, too. So that was my update, if there are any questions.
I just have a motion. I would like to move that we formally request CMP to terminate the streetlight at Bay Point.
Second?
All right. All in favor? Look at that, we'll have some very happy folks at Bay Point with regrets. Thank you, Bronwyn.
So here's a question for you, then. Of course, it begs the question of, if that's the, if that's where we're headed with Robin Hood, with Lisa's property essentially. It makes sense to ask them, is that, would that be the same solution down there if it gets, if, once it goes through?
I would assume so.
Yeah.
So just a matter of, but, you know, making sure, I'll check with Dad, the road commissioner.
Exactly.
And figure that stuff out first, and then we'll deal with that.
It's a shop car.
Yeah, yes.
It's a very shop car.
That's the thought, right.
And it goes into nothing. You've got a field and trees and plants and just disappears.
And ledge, yeah. Right on this side.
And I'm not saying that that would be the case, it just would be a one-two for them.
Right, right.
Exactly.
Right, yes, click, click.
They actually physically have to come and remove the light, but there's no cost to the town during that either, so. Was there anything you wanted to share as a finance director update?
Not a whole lot, other than the fact that I have sent another email. I, I had a meeting with the auditors last week via Zoom to go over a couple of things. You know, we've been working with Purdy Powers for a number of years, ever since I began as treasurer here. And this is the first time we've had someone else doing the books. Their presentation is much different, and it's, it has been difficult for me to get through it. So I sent them another email today, or this afternoon, and expect to hear back from them.
Who's, who's your auditor?
RHR Smith.
Where are they?
Ron Smith out of...
Auburn?
Old Orchard.
Old Orchard, okay.
I think, Old Orchard, I think.
All right. Is that a Gatsby audit? Is it a government, is, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, and the, and the problem is, of course, is that they merged the school with the town.
Right.
And that's the problem, is that I used to be able to tell exactly what the school was, exactly, you know what I mean? And they've just done it differently, they've, they've done our, actually, they're restating our financials from the past because of, they felt that our capital, you know, our capital reserves and things weren't properly accounted for in the right space. So they've, they've done some changes there, and again, I'm just having a hard time tying it out. So I know that it's all, all there, it's just a matter of tying it back up. So, so I expect it, we'll be wrapping that up.
I mean, I think a lot of people having that, that experience with auditors, because so many auditors, they're just, they're gone. And so there, you know, a lot of us are struggling with the same thing, so I was just kind of picking your brain about that.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mary.
And, and I, on the, on the table is the last warrant for this fiscal year. And, you know, it begins again, so.
Thank you, Mary. We had no items of old business on the agenda, which brings us to our last item of business in the public prior to our executive sessions, though I do think we may want to indulge public comment now just because most folks will be gone. But before that, there is an item to adopt an interim fee schedule. It was provided in your packet. There was a couple of slight revisions made. I noted that today's date very presumptuously was the day this interim fee schedule was adopted. I also noted when it will be revisited for a final vote on the July 23rd. That'll be the night that we have the public hearing that I expect will have more folks coming to comment on. It is worth noting, though, that we added the FOA request statute allows up to $25 an hour past the initial two hours. So we decided to get that on the fee schedule because we were asked to come back with recommendations, photocopies at 50 cents a page, notaries at $5 a document. And I would note that the special user free from the TOPMB, we will be getting their feedback on part of the way their ordinance was written, so for the 23rd, that will definitely be included, but wasn't on tonight because they aren't even accepting applications yet, though it is coming. I talk too much?
I move to adopt the interim fee schedule?
Second?
All in favor?
All right. Three to zero.
And Tyler, have we notified the committee chairs that on the, whatever it is, in July 23rd, there will be a public hearing and there will be a vote of the Select Board on a new schedule of fees? So that any input they have, we need to receive well before then?
That is my intention. I've been verbally, as folks coming in, been getting them, but my goal was by the end of this week with a copy of the document in the format for them to review, to get it out this week. So that will be going formally, but I have picked a few folks as they've been coming in to get sworn in and so on.
Excellent. I just wanted to make sure that we had it out there universally, so that nobody could say they were blindsided about it.
Absolutely, and it will be on the website tomorrow as well, so.
Good.
Thank you, Bronwyn. There were no items for signature other than the warrant. And again, if we wanna indulge doing things a little different, I think public comment now and then into executive session.
Is there any public comment before we go into executive session? I do not see any.
Alright. So pursuant to one MSRA.
Yep, pers-. Uh, pursuant to, um, one MSR, a section four oh six.
Four oh five.
Four oh five, excuse me, four oh five, section six, section E, um, executive session pursuant to consultant consultations with legal counsel. Don't forget to stop the recording, and.
We'll do that after the vote.
Oh.
All in favor?
Second, somebody's second, yeah.
Okay, sorry, all in favor? Three, zero.
Perfect, thank you, we're gonna pause that, and if members of the public could depart, thank you for your participation tonight.
And do you, do you wanna have her in when I do this, or?
She'll come in after.
Okay, um, pursuant to, um, one MSR, a section four oh five, section six, uh, section MRS, is that correct? Um, pursuant to, um, personnel matters, I, do I have to move that we're going into executive session? Or do I just, we're going into executive session?
Uh, yes, so.
Yeah.
As a motion.
I second it.
Okay, motion.
All in favor?
Perfect, I'm gonna pause.
So I guess we need a motion to, um, post the, uh, in a patrol officer, um, position.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, all in favor? Thank you, three, zero. And.
How about a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening.